So I'd like to call the meeting to order. And I'll ask Marcus, will you please call the role, or Terry, sorry, Terry, please call the role?
Mr. Hayes.
Present.
Ms. Holliday.
Present.
Ms. O'Donnell. Ms. Roberts.
Here.
Mr. Shepherd.
Here.
Ms. Urban. Mr. Reese.
Here.
Thank you very much. Are there any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes to the agenda.
Okay. So the next item is approval of previous minutes, and in this case, we have minutes from January 8th and March 5th, 2025. Those were made available in the agenda packet online on May 30th. And so the way we do this is first, we vote to approve the minutes, and then if there are any edits or amendments, we address those. Seems a little backwards, but there we are. Right? That's the way it is. Yeah, yeah, okay. Yeah. So is there a motion to approve the minutes? And this assumes that the edits are minor.
And we should, we should do these individually. So January.
Oh, right, sorry.
8th first, and then March 5th.
So the January 8th, is there a motion to approve the minutes, understanding that there may still be edits coming? Thank you, Trent. And second?
The second.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. And so now, are there any edits or amendments to the minutes of January 8th, 2025?
There was one item in the minutes that said, Mr. Weiss said something about a brick bike pathway convergence. I believe that was Mr. Hayes who said that.
Oh, sorry, so on page two, that's under item J, and that is correct. So that third paragraph, Mr. Weiss stated that he also did not report in the spreadsheet. You might have said that.
I did say that.
Okay. And then what follows, then, it says, "He went on to say," that remark would be, "I, Hayes, went on to say that he was happy to experience in person that bike path."
Yeah. That was.
Oh, well, yeah, actually, it is vague. That was the bike path at West Main and Lincoln, where it meets Lincoln Avenue on the north side of the road. Something that had come up in a previous meeting. I had some edits to on page four, but Terry, I'll give these to you because they were little things in my long monologue about history. So I just had some, some things in there that were, I don't have a recording of what I said, but the intent was certainly a little different. So should I read those aloud for everyone to hear them? Or they were like six or seven little things. But, yeah, okay.
We might as well know.
Right. So on page four, in the third paragraph, Mr. Hayes said that he reread the 1998 Historic Preservation Plan. And then, starting in that, in the fourth line, "We are always making history in the present, and then the past is a given condition." I would add the word "given" there. And then the next sentence, I, I would strike that phrase, "History is preservation of the past." I think I probably said, "History is not preservation of the past." But again, I'd have to watch the recording. So we could add, "History is not preservation of the past." And then, then continues there. Yeah, I would actually, that's the best way to do that, would be just to add, "History is not preservation of the past, and the existing plan actually does not directly preserve the past. It preserves the history, and the history it invites us to preserve is basically," and then, "Native American people were trans-" I would, after "Native American people," I would just strike the word "who." Because it's, the point is, "Native American people were transient, and the prioritizing of settlement as an excuse for claims, real estate and buildings." So that was talking about how the history that was framed there is very much oriented towards rich, white men. And then, in that, and towards the end of that long paragraph, four lines up from the bottom, in the line that starts, "They talk about preserving buildings." I would end that sentence by just striking the word "be," "And he thinks that we should." Because it says, "People do not talk about preserving trees like they talk about preserving buildings, and he," meaning me, "thinks that we should," as opposed to "should be." And then, in that last sentence, so starting in the line that begins expansive to up from the bottom, "If we rewrite the historical summary at the beginning," meaning at the beginning of the plan, "According to new priorities, we might be asking to support different things than what we're asking for." And then, the only other edits were in that last paragraph, in terms of three kinds of history. The second line, where it says, "To antichorean history," I would say, "Where you do not know the relative value." The idea is, everything has the same value, so you don't know the relative value of everything, so everything is important. And then the very last edit would be in that fourth line that starts, "Says," "Says that we have," "Says that we have the right to look at and judge." How, so I would add, "And judge how people did things in the past and disagree." Those were, those were, at least, the idea edits that I thought were important to amend. But, I mean, there was a lot of discussion there, so good job at taking the notes, because there was a lot of, a lot coming out there. Any other edits to this, or any other part of these minutes? No? No? Anyone? So.
I've got a comment, maybe, for that, if you would.
Please, yeah.
So I was not at this meeting, but I think that your comments are here about, "People do not talk about preserving trees like they talk about buildings," is very interesting to me, having tried to also preserve trees along the Green Street corridor during the EMCOR project and doing some other interest, having interested in it for a long time. Assumes elm tree, or hackberry tree, when that was taken down, was something that I was concerned about very much. So I know we do have the Tree Commission, but it strikes me, having talked to members of the Tree Commission, that mostly their duties are to manage and, manage the urban forest. They know a lot about tree qualities and types, but preservation doesn't seem to be as important to them as tree removal once they get large due to safety issues. And so the whole question of, you know, managing the forest like a forester, and the need to do tree preservation are kind of like, sort of like, at odds at the Tree Commission level. Now, I do recognize that we do have, what do they call, there's a significant tree program, I can't remember the name of it.
It's the Legacy Tree Program.
Legacy Tree Program, yeah. So that's, you know, that's a great step forward in that direction, but it's hard to preserve a tree that has great significance if it's old, in the modern, safety-conscious needs of the community and the city as a managing editing entity.
And they have, and trees have, you know, like, their own lifespans, so sometimes it's not possible. But to be able to recognize their cultural significance, like that of the prairie, would be, I think, a phenomenal way to holistically expand the scope of what we think about and talk about.
Now, if I could say one more thing, okay, just one more thing, is there is one instance where we do have preserved, and we have a plaque preserving or the memory of a tree in Urbana, and that's the Lincoln Tree, which is on East Main Street, next to the auto part store, Auto Zone, I think is the name of the store. That was the site of a tree under which Lincoln gave a historic talk to a large crowd in support of the Fremont, who was a first Republican candidate for presidency. This is four years before he became a president candidate himself. So that did occur in East Urbana. That tree, I did research on that tree. The tree was already broken, and more or less like a stump, sort of, you know, it's about a 12-foot-tall stump, but the oak tree, or the elm tree, used to be a tribal meeting place, a council meeting place in Urbana. And Lincoln's talk under that tree has continued its importance, but the tree was removed ultimately in 1912. But the site is still there, and it's marked by a newly planted tree, and it's, and there's a marking there too as well.
Thank you for those comments.
What do we do with, when we're approving, we've already approved the minutes, do we know?
I'll move to approve the amendments.
Is that how we do that?
Yeah, yeah. And then Kate, did you have a?
I just wanted to quickly say that if the issue of tree landmarking is of interest, there are plenty of models of CLGs that have done this and using cultural landscape designation for individual historic trees. So there's, there's plenty out there on that.
Thank you. So all, we have some amendments, some edits, and some nice commentary. All members in favor of the amendments, please say yes.
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 Any, all members opposed, please say no. Okay, thank you. So those, the minutes of January 8th are approved as corrected. So the minutes for March 5th, so do we have a motion to approve the minutes? Again, understanding that there are going to be edits.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Thank you, Dennis. Anyone want a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Trent. And so any edits, any amendments to those minutes? No? Okay. So the minutes are approved as submitted. Do we do that even though we just, even though there are no edits? Okay. All members in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
I'll oppose, please say no. Thank you very much. So the minutes are approved as submitted. Written communications?
We did not have any written communications.
Okay, thank you. And then, for the audience participation section, is there any member of the audience who wishes to address the Historic Preservation Commission on any topic not related to those in the study session? So those three topics. Yes, please come forward. Hello. So there's, yeah, you could stand or sit, right? Yeah? Is that microphone on?
Hello?
Yeah, okay. So please say who you are.
Hi, I'm Carmen Franks, and I'm a resident of the 800 West Main block, the historic district. So I am here to highlight a few things that I think are needs that I want to present to the commission. The first being, the need to revisit financial incentives for investments in historic properties, possibly those that are non-contributing as well along the district. So what has driven me to come to you today is that my neighbor has recently fallen on some hard times. He has been living in the home for over 10 years, but it has been owned for decades by his mother-in-law. He moved in with his, his wife and his mother-in-law over 10 years ago, and both of them recently passed away, the wife and the mother-in-law, within the last six months. So now, he is left with a property to maintain that has some severe roof damage and electrical work that is needed. So his mother-in-law did opt out of the historic district, so if there were incentives to those that are only contributing, then he would not be eligible. But I think it's important to reconsider incentives for those that are contributing and non-contributing for people like him, and just others that own really old homes that may find themselves in need of severe repairs that could impact the facade and impact that historic character of the neighborhood. So I know that this was in the 1998 Historic Preservation Plan, but no local incentives have been set up since, so I wanted to just encourage you to revisit that. The next thing, encourage you to revisit the educational outreach for residents, property owners like myself, who, I moved here just three and a half years ago, and when I bought the home, I was unaware of the requirements that were set for the historic district properties. So maybe a little bit more outreach would be helpful to people like myself that move in and don't have an understanding of what goes into those requirements until they start working with a colleague like Marcus, who informs you of the requirements for your home. And then finally, you know, following along with the comprehensive plan, the Imagine Urbana work that's being done, it seems, from my perspective, there seems to be a lot of fear about losing the historic character of West Urbana, and if we were to be rezoned, then maybe we would lose these homes. So I would encourage you to encourage the city to, if you have the opportunity, to have more changes to the comprehensive plan, to add more about how much we value our historic properties, even if it's adding some language, some text to some things that are already there. I know there's one line in a big idea number four, objective 4.5, "The city's historic architecture and features are used to enhance its eclectic character." I don't see any big moves or little moves that are associated with that objective 4.5. So potentially, set up local incentives to preserve historic properties could be a little move that is under one of the big moves, like Big Move 2. I think that was under an economic development initiative. Yeah, that's all. Thank you all.
Thank you.
I have one question, actually, which is a procedural question. Am I right that when people offer remarks on this point, there's no dialogue, there's no comment, like, because it's not a public hearing section?
I think it is, that it is not a dialogue. Is that correct, Terry?
Yeah. Okay. So for a public hearing, there could be a dialogue with commissioners, but, so duly noted, thank you for all three points, which are things that are, have, actually, you're touching on things that we've been touching on in different ways, so that is great to hear. And I look forward to hearing more as we go forward and to sharing more. Yeah. Thank you. Anyone else wish to offer input? Thank you very much. Continued public hearings?
There are none.
Right. And old business?
There is none.
New public hearings?
There are none.
And new business?
There is no new business.
Monitoring of historic properties, is there anything to report from commissioners or from anyone?
I would invite simply to go clockwise, or, and just say yes, no?
I don't think I have any properties assigned to me.
Okay.
Well, I've gone out and looked at my historic district and three prop, three houses, and I actually entered a little something in the Google document, or whatever it is.
And I was able to see that, so it worked out just fine.
I'm glad you did. And I was able to enter that. And I went over and looked at the, the Royer House and the Danley, the cottage behind them, and I was actually in the Royer House. They had a, I don't know if any of you went to it, they had a kind of an open house that, was it PACA, I think, sponsored?
Mm-hmm.
It had a little program there, and I talked to the owner quite a bit, and he's been working on the inside of it and doing some stabilization, and I was quite pleased with I went by the, what's the one called, the, the house where Lincoln slept? What, what's that one called, Stuart?
Boyden House.
Boyden House, I couldn't remember the name. And it looked like it was in pretty good shape, and it kind of looked like someone had been engaged very recently in, in doing some painting on the house. There was some scraping done, and all the ones that I looked at seemed to be relatively well cared for. And probably, well, I'm guessing this, maybe it ought to be during Stuart's part, but I've had a little communication with Kathleen Jones that owns the, the house on Weber Street, and she has engaged two people, two masons, to do foundation work, and she was happy with that. And she's still looking for a suitable carpenter. And I gave her a couple names that I thought of. And if any of you have, she wanted to know if we had any suggestions for people she could contact, I gave her two names, and if any of you have any suggestion, I'd be glad to give them to her.
Trent, I will probably hit you up for her contact info, because she should apply for a certificate of appropriateness for those repairs. It's likely that they.
Hasn't done anything yet, but.
Oh, okay, okay. She secured, she hasn't started yet, though. Okay. Thank you for clarifying.
And she's, she said that the house would be repainted this summer. And repainting doesn't need any kind of, you know.
It doesn't require a certificate, but it would be great if she could just coordinate with us. And that way, when somebody calls us and says, "Hey, they're doing work on that," I can then sound smart and say, "Yes, we know."
Yep.
And it's an exempt activity.
And she's hoping to make it all happen this year. All right. So that's my report on that house. And next?
I did, two pass-throughs in the 800 block of West Main in Urbana, and everything looked orderly. I mean, so everything seemed fine.
Regarding the ones, the properties that I review or observe, I, I was there in April, and so I updated the spreadsheet as well, and kind of cross-referenced what is in the upcoming staff report about the number eight Buena Vista. Essentially have the same information on there, so.
Okay, and for myself, I haven't really checked, but I did give a pretty thorough report at our last meeting for the Kennebaptist Church, which is still in the state of said it is. They still haven't completed ordering the Royer District signage, which we designed for them, or I did, I worked with them on that for a couple of years. They still haven't purchased it, to my knowledge. Hotel Royer is open for business and looking wonderful. We have to congratulate that as a completed project for the city and for the community. And then, I did mention that the Haverstat House is a, has got problems with the stairwell up to the deck. That's at the back of the house, or the east side of the house, and needs to be looked at, but I don't know what's going on there.
Thank you very much. So item K, staff report. Marcus, would you please share the staff report for this month, June 2025?
Sure. I will hit the highlights. CLG grants, we were notified that the website reconstruction was approved for $8,400. We now need to go through a process whereby city council accepts that grant. That requires writing a memo and going to council and them saying, "We'll take the money." Meanwhile, I believe that we will be able to pay the intern from our existing budget line item for temporary staff out of that, so hopefully that wouldn't hold things up for intern work. I have to get confirmation of that, though, from finance. And I'm working with HR to process Adeline Evans's application materials to be the intern. On the flip side, the Joseph Royer Education Project application was not funded. I did request comments, review comments from John Presley, so hopefully we can figure out, you know, how we can make it a stronger application, and if perhaps, having perhaps a matching grant from the city might strengthen the application. That all being said, I would encourage discussion about continuing, moving forward with the in-kind work that the donors had, you know, said that they were willing to contribute so that, if they wanted to, so that time would not be lost. So then, what might only need to be done at the end of the year is the actual printing and reproduction, because all the design work would have already been done, or some measure of it. And that way, we can actually put that as an update in the application to say, you know, first cycle, it was not funded, the design team continued to work on it as their in-kind match, and, you know, showing their commitment to the project. And so maybe that will also help, you know, the points in the rubric for funding.
That's a great idea. I mean, we were excited about that application. We're excited about both of them. So, yeah, so that's a wonderful idea to help make.
And I know Dennis did a lot of work talking with the Urbana Free Library about having an exhibit space. A couple times, Joseph Pryor at the Hotel Royer has talked about having a small exhibit space there, so I think there are people that would be excited to host it. So that's that. Preservation Month activities, the mid-century modern housing exhibit and tour. The exhibit goes on through July 12th. That was really great. The panel and tour happened last Saturday. It was a long, lovely, beautiful day, great weather. The tour was fully sold out, over 250 ticket holders. The panel in the morning was comprised of Quinn Adamowski, who traveled here as a representative of landmarks in Illinois, Elizabeth Blasisz from Preservation Futures up in Chicago, and also Chris Enk, who has his restoration firm, The Burnham Group, and is also an owner of at least the Joseph Royer House here in Urbana. The panel was moderated by Dr. Kate Holliday. Other people that were heavily involved were David Hayes. And I guess I'll just throw it open to members of the organizing team for any other comments, any thoughts about future plans.
Sure. I would add that I was very pleased to see how many people came to the panel in the morning. And there was also opportunity to encourage folks in the audience to think about who the members of their Historic Preservation Commission are. I did ask if anyone knew, and no one raised their hand. So they now at least know two members, actually, three, Andrew, we, you had left at that point, but we said that you had been there earlier. And we encourage folks to just go ahead and look it up also, to see who's on their commission in Urbana, Champaign, or wherever they're from. So because there were questions about, "How do I do this? How do I, are there funds available to take care of my property?" And so we also introduced Marcus as city staff for Urbana. And so I think that was a very positive development in front of a very large and enthusiastic audience, to get some of that kind of nitty-gritty of historic preservation policy across.
Could you share, because as part of your presentation, you actually shared three suggestions for future plans, and they were all great. Could, would you mind just giving a half-sentence for each one of those?
Did I share three things?
Yeah.
Like, that was several, that was several days ago. Do you remember what the three things were?
One of them being about how an African-American neighborhood is intact?
Oh, 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 for next, for next year, yes. So the tour this year focused on mid-century modern houses by the architects Jack Baker, John Replinger, and a Richard Dick Williams, because of the content of the exhibition at the Cranert Art Museum. And it was a really wonderful collection of homes. I was suggesting to the crowd that we should do this again next year, which I think everyone says, yes. And I was tossing out what are some ideas about what we might tour next year, not the same four places, but maybe some other places. So the things that I had in my head were, if you wanted to do more mid-century modern, one suggestion is Yankee Ridge, where I keep saying, "If you throw a stick, you hit another mid-century modern house." you hit another mid-century modern house by one of these architects. The second suggestion are neighborhoods like Carver Park, which has a remarkable collection of mid-century homes that were financed by the Black community for Black residents. That's also a fantastic neighborhood that tells the story of Urbana and Champagne. And then the third one, now I, oh, LGBTQ history in Champagne and Urbana as well, which is kind of prompted by some of the sites associated with Jack Baker on Chester Street, but also thinking much more broadly about other architects who weren't included in the show, including Harold Young and others. There is an opportunity to think broadly and culturally about sites associated with LGBTQ history here. Those are just three ideas, and there are surely more about how we can use the built environment and our cultural landscape to really tell a bigger story about this place.
And I would only add to commend Kate and people from the Champagne County Museum, the organizing, all of all that. I was very involved in the exhibition at the museum. And in this case, just having to spend an afternoon in Jack Baker's loft apartment, being a curator in residence, wow, talk about luxurious. It was wonderful. But the mood for the whole event was great. And so the lion's share of the work, though, went really with Kate. So thank you for that.
Thank you. I actually, while we're thanking people, it really was a collaborative effort. And I, for historic preservation, I actually think it's a good lesson that there are a lot of organizations out there in town who all share concerns that there's like a Venn diagram of overlap. And so if even once a year at Preservation Month, if all of those groups can come together, like Champagne County History Museum, Cranert Art Museum, which may not seem like a preservation group, but they really are about the arts in our community. And there are many, many other organizations out there that I think could contribute and really be a part of making this a bigger, more open conversation that brings in as many people care about this place as possible. So I would feel like a goal for next year is keep those collaborators, keep the collaboration going, and bring in new folks who have other stories to tell.
I'd like to play off of that and just mention that this year's Preservation Month proclamation didn't really focus on something that the city did directly, like host a tour or something, but it was talking about celebrating Hotel Royer, celebrating PACA's open house there at the Joseph Royer House and the anniversary of the Ferry Book, and then also the mid-century modern house tour and exhibit. So, you know, celebrating our partners rather than the city itself. That's the first thing. The second thing is, I think a great idea would be working with the folks from the Dr. Ellis subdivision in Carver Park, who came to us very strongly, probably four or five years ago, pre and during COVID, about doing something for the Dr. Ellis neighborhood, whether it was a historic district or maybe a neighborhood conservation district. And I think, you know, teaming up with them to see if they want to showcase their area and, you know, see if they would like to do something for it, not just tour, but also some sort of memorializing or, you know, formalizing some sort of recognition. And then finally, the tour, the LGBTQ tour, maybe at the cusp of Preservation Month May and Pride Month of June would be a great idea, one of these upcoming years. So, yeah, great ideas.
Part of what you're speaking to there is something from our previous discussions about the need to amend the Historic Preservation Commission plan. And I'm thinking about Kate's remark that different, there are, there's not a one-size-fits-all approach that actually works. And so that's a good example of it, that a neighborhood or a community that doesn't all live in one place, these are really different reasons to care. So thank you for highlighting it.
Moving on with the staff report, historic property activities, landmarking in districts. There haven't been any new inquiries, but the final thing I want to come off from the mid-century modern house tour was I think the Erlanger Residence is a fabulous building. And if the University of Illinois at Urbana-Champaign, i.e. Illinois, would like to landmark the Erlanger Residence, I think it would be a great candidate for it being a local historic landmark. And then moving on, Kate Holliday has been working with Reverend Bob Freeman of the First United Methodist Church on a National Register list submission that if interested could easily turn into a local landmark. Do you have any updates on that?
I do. The National Register nomination is still going to take a little bit longer. This is a group of three students that is working together to draft that I'll review before passing along. The local landmarks should be ready soon, very quickly, yep.
Moving into certificates of appropriateness. For Buena Vista Court, the utility work that didn't require a certificate appears to have been completed. I think one of the board members reported that in their update. Is that you, Andrew? Thank you. And then for Buena Vista Court number eight, it had, you know, three certificates of appropriateness out for it. The first one was restoring the windows. That was completed a few years back and has already been closed out. The second one was 2021 CVA number one. The access ramp was removed. The, I do not believe the concrete steps were replaced or removed. And I think the porch stucco and framing and screens is not complete, and the porch door is still just a doorway. I did speak with the new owner, Javier Romo, who's a Chicago resident. He had no idea that there were certificates that had been issued to the previous owner. They don't necessarily transfer, but they can. He is interested in perhaps transferring the one that will allow him to do some more work on the porch so he can at least put some screens on it. And so he'll get back with me on which ones he would like to get transferred to him and whatever he doesn't want transferred, we will simply close those permits as incomplete and at least get them, you know, finished. And then finally, the Hotel Royer, the second certificate for the exterior repairs has been completed. The work's been completed and it's been closed out. And that's really all of our open certificates of appropriateness right now.
I have a follow-up question, and in part it's because it would come anyhow, but also Carmen Franks raised this question from the floor, I mean, given her own situation. So short of a homeowner declaring upfront or a realtor that this is the case, that there are these, that you're in a historic district, there, I mean, what are the, what are the mechanisms? What is the agency that we have? It seems like it's a very fraught area, if you think about it, because somebody could be trying to sell their place, and maybe they don't want to underscore that, right? Maybe they should be underscoring it. Maybe they don't recognize the value of it. But is there, do we have any sense of what the agency we actually have or what the mechanism might be to communicate that, short of the owner or realtor declaring it?
I wonder if there's, there would be something in the, in the, on the title of the property.
I believe there should be.
Which should come up when the title is inspected.
Yes.
Assuming that there's a lawyer that inspects the title.
Right.
Before the person buys it.
It would have to go on the, like, on a county record, though, that we would have to-
And all of the landmarks are decision sheets that do get recorded. So if, if there is a matching of parcel numbers and somebody looks up the parcel number, it should show up in, in the title search if it's done thoroughly.
I think, I would guess that people ought to be on notice legally that there's a restriction on the property, and it's not just word of mouth.
Right.
But I, I've never looked into it, so I don't know.
There are things that the city can do. Staff can beef up their owner education. And I know PACA has volunteered to help with that. I think one of the issues that I'm speculating now, especially with the districts as opposed to the landmarks, is the land, individual landmarks get a pretty hard-to-miss plaque that gets bolted to the front of their house. The properties in the districts do not. So you could live in a district and unless you happen to wonder about the sign at the end of the street, if it hasn't been run over, is like, what does, what does this mean? This block is a district. Does that mean anything? Whereas if you have a plaque on your house, presumably you have asked what that means.
My understanding, and I could be incorrect about this, is that in the, like, giant stack of papers that you're signing when you're purchasing a property, that one sheet would cover the idea that it is a historic district? And I don't know if everyone is like me, and maybe everyone is a little bit more attentive than I am. But at the point that you're signing that hundred sheets of paper, one of them would be the sheet that's about being in a historic district. And there's not a lot that goes along with explaining what, what that means. So I do, to the earlier point that was made, there's probably an opportunity to think a little bit, since we don't have that many historic districts here especially, about how there could be something additional that is flagged in a positive way about what a historic district is. And to the point of realtor education that was brought up by PACA many times and like a really smart idea. There are realtors who are like hot to support this idea of realtor education about historic districts, historic properties, et cetera. And so there is a really good opportunity to also change some of the narrative about a historic district being something you don't want to disclose versus something you do want to disclose as something being very positive.
I'd like to point out a couple of things. One is that our CitizenServe permit software does have a checkbox on it for, or a field on it for listing if something is in a historic district or a historic landmark. So we have the capabilities of noting this in our permitting software if something is required to get a permit. Painting does not. But we have to make sure that it's interfacing with everything else properly so that even if it is tagged, that when somebody applies for a permit, that that flag gets waved by the software. The other thing is, I found it interesting that I think maybe along Green Street, as I was driving around that area, that the street signs in some of the areas are brown and say Historic Urbana on it, which I, I kind of wonder, I think it's great, but I kind of wonder why that is, and if anybody knows why it'd be-
Because the people of Historic West Urbana or whatever, whatever, West Urbana paid over $10,000 to have our own street signs painted and put up, yeah.
Do you know when that was?
How long ago? Seven or eight years ago?
No, it was longer than that.
Was it?
Yeah. What would you, what would you-
I would guess 15 or-
I would guess 15 at least.
Seems like seven or eight to me.
Well, it's always like that.
I'll check in with Public Works and figure out, figure that out.
I could, if I had nothing better to do, I could probably find my old check register from whatever year and see how much money I gave toward that. And then we'd know. But it did happen.
I will hassle you if I can't, if nobody there from Public Works remembers or can figure it out, couldn't figure it out.
I happen to have the Moona files in a box in my basement. There might be a file on that.
If you come across it, that would be great.
I'll make a note to look, Marcus.
Thanks. So that's the end of my staff report. I'm happy to answer questions or-
Marcus, I do have one quick question. When, when would the city, when would the acceptance of the grant go to the city council?
It depends on when time is available for me to write that memo and get it reviewed by the proper reviewers and then to get on the council agenda. Hopefully it won't be that long to write it, maybe end of June, perhaps.
Okay.
But hopefully we can start work without having to wait for that.
Yeah. I was just wondering if, if we could show up and-
It would be fabulous, fabulous if you showed up, and I will give you plenty of notice.
Thank you.
I've got a question, kind of relating to it, since we've talked about historic districts. I wonder if there's ever been any interest in trying to expand the West Main Street Historic District. I know it's only a block long, but I remember that it could have been a couple of blocks long for the lack of one vote, it is for, for the property owners. And I'm wondering if the feeling has changed in direction that it might be of value to try to expand it? Because certainly there's some significant homes that are already locally landmarked and nationally known on that street that are not in the historic district. I wonder if that would be a project for us to reconsider that sometime in the future?
I think that's a very interesting idea, and perhaps also even on the 800 block. You know, 20 years later, maybe the current owners, if they're the same, might be convinced to change their minds. Or if they're new owners, they might be like, well, I didn't know I was non-contributing. Why don't I get to be contributing? So it could maybe fill in some of the, the non-contributing gaps. But I think that's a very interesting idea.
Thank you for that. Okay. So we'll move to item L now, the study session. And we'll start with a presentation on the Gothic Revival Cottage at 118 North Weber Street, to be presented by Emeritus Professor Stuart Berlacher. You, you can come right up to the table and, are you, as Marcus, are you going to be steering the presentation or Professor Berlacher? Speaking to the microphone is essential.
For the record, Stuart.
Can you, can you move the mouse to do that? Because, because it will, yeah, if you can move the mouse to do that, then, then everyone viewing online will be able to see it very clearly. As well as if, we have monitors here in front of us that duplicate what's on the screen. Yeah.
Okay, so let me start with me. A lot of you know who I am. I was an evolutionary biologist, if I can say that these days. Can I hear him? Okay with that? All right. And, but I've always been interested in history. My parents were deeply interested in family history in a good way, you know. And, and I just, when I discovered that, when my kids were little, that I, is that all right? Am I not speaking? Okay. Is that better? Okay. I, I don't know, 15 years ago or so, I realized that I was walking through the, when I went to work, I was walking through a neighborhood where Abraham Lincoln walked, you know, down the street from me. And I, it just kind of excited me. So I got interested in, in the houses, first of all, in my neighborhood. And I put together a comp, I'm trying to make the background there, go to this thing, okay? I, I did a background study on kind of everything I could find out about old houses in my neighborhood, mostly focusing on the Civil War era, the 1850s and 60s. And because I don't code well, it's not in the form of a webpage. But it's, you guys still have a copy of this someplace. It's a big, thick PDF printout on my researches. And I'm also, and then I got interested, because I love Lincoln, I realized that he was, you know, a couple of blocks away one night, you know, and spent the night there before he argued with, well, he didn't really argue with, with Douglas the next day. It's a long story. Anyway, so I, my official capacity of working with the City of Urbana consists of working with trees. I've been on the city tree commission for a very long time here. And perhaps, I'll mention this briefly, if you're at all interested in, Dennis was talking about trees and how we look differently at trees depending on our backgrounds. I've been working for a long time on a, on a history of the Big Grove, which I'm going to try to give at the library. They don't know that yet. I haven't scheduled it yet. They don't know that yet, I haven't scheduled it yet. But to come up later this summer sometime after I get it done. So anyway, this house, to get to focus on the pointed hand here. I had discovered this house in my work around the year 2010 or so, on trying to find everything I could find out about old houses in my neighborhood. And I noticed this house, like many of us have, driving through the neighborhood, and I went, wow, look at that, a, a house with what appears to have surviving barge boards. These are very common in the architecture of the 1850s and 60s, very uncommon in surviving houses in this neighborhood. And I looked and I went, wow, look at those. Now, how would I, is there some way I could point, well?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, just, just to, to look at the, this is, okay, at the top is a picture I took from the street, showing the house in 2014. And below that is, is what I thought the house matched very well, the SJ Toy House, which was originally over here in West Urbana. And it's on the Alexander Bowman map of West, of Urbana and Western Urbana. And mostly the slides I have were taken from the reproduction available at the library, then from the original, which there, which there are two at the library. And I circled the location down there at the bottom, the, the original location, and then the little cartouche of it, which you'd already seen at the top there. And I, and I thought, how would I prove that the existing house is really the same thing as the SJ J Toy House? So I approached it as kind of a little fun investigative project for myself to do here. So it just really won't take that long, but, but I talked to Trent about it, and he insisted that I come in and talk to you guys about why I thought we could actually prove that this, this house really was this, this, this 1850s house, and we'd made the, the right identification between them, the existing house and the image that survives. And this is the, this is the evidence in general here. Anyway, if you look at the house, like from the west view here, the existing house at the top, 2020, and the 1858 house, there are some things which match very well. On the, on this west exposure, it has, it has three windows, the top one having a little kind of classic V-shaped Gothic slope. You can't really see it quite so well up there, but we'll, we'll see it better later. And there are, there are three windows there total. The lattice, there's lattice work that, on these two porches, both the, the top image, 2020 and the lower one, 1858, show a house that has little porches on each side with lattice work, shadings, I mean presumably you'd sit out there or something in 1858. And, and, and they match up very well. And also these barge boards, these cutouts up and down the roof, which show better on some later slides. I, I come back over all of these points in just a second. And at least on the north porch, actually, on both porches, there is a door opening into the house, you can see if you look carefully enough. All right, you can see it here and here. And, and in the images down here, we'll, we'll look at that where you can see it better. So advance on to the next slide here. So what I did, I just pointed out that, that the points that caught my eye, and I'm going back over each one of those major points, starting with the porch lattice work, which, if it's the original 1858 lattice work, which I think it is, it's, it's a stupendous fluke of nature that it's still there, because lattice work is little thin boards cut out and nailed together, and they overlap as, as they do here. So on the left there, there's the 1858 house. I've blown up parts of the image from the map from the library. And as you can see, it, it has lattice work panels on either side. It also has some other ornamentation as well. And then on the right side, I've blown up the, the 2014 photograph I took. And if you look very carefully, you can see that the lattice work does actually overlap as pieces of lattice work should. It's not cutouts. There are cutouts up in each corner, all right? Those are, those are solid pieces of wood with ornate cut, cutouts, and they exist both in, in the 1858 and the 2014 photographs here. I thought it was unusual that, unlikely that the house would have, if somebody just added that lattice work in 1953 after they got back from the Second World War, that they wouldn't have used lattice work that looked like that, and with all those ornate cutouts here. So moving along.
One question, Stuart.
Feel free to wave your hand, whatever you want to-
So would, would the 1858 thing have been a drawing or a DeGiro type or something?
Oh, I'm making the terrible assumption of assuming everybody lives and dies with Alexander Bowman. Do you guys-
Well, we spent a few years together, but other than that, no, just kidding.
Alexander Bowman is a, is a, was a fabulously interesting man to me. He worked here and in Danville both, and he was a draftsman and a trained architect. And he was involved with a lot of the early history of Urbana. And he, in order presumably to make money, he designed these, these large-scale maps showing Urbana, West Urbana and Urbana, and then showing you representative houses, the little cartouches. I know I went through it fairly quickly at the beginning, because I know we don't want to be here all night with this, but what was your point about Alexander Bowman so that-
I was just checking to make sure that this would have been a drawing and not a photograph, because although it looks really similar-
Yes.
This is like a, a two-wide, two diamond-wide lattice, whereas this is a single. And, and that's just-
It's not a perfect-
Okay, so it was a drawing, though.
Representation.
Okay.
So Bowman, to my knowledge, we don't have any surviving Bowman artwork, as in drawing pencil and paper to, to his architecture. I think all of that stuff disappeared into the sands of time. The ones that survived, and we can, we could have a field trip, over to the library, they have two of these originals, they're large prints like this, which you've all seen. I was working here with a smaller scale, a reduction that you can buy over there, because I could lug it around and work on it on my table at night after the kids went to bed. Is that too much explanation, too little?
No, that's fine.
Okay? And I'm really entranced by the, the originals are fantastic. They're, they're larger and you can see even more details than you can, but I did not, I wasn't set up in a place where I could ask them to lay down these large originals and I could hang the camera over and take a different set of shots. Is it, okay?
And we have a, a big version of it, which I think maybe the county recorder might have a, a big one as well, so if any members are interested in seeing that, it's in the CD office.
An original, original?
No, no, just a reproduction, a print.
To my knowledge, there are, there are three originals that Bowman did of this map. He did other maps that he sold to, anyway. And so I don't expect it to match perfectly over all those years, and, but I, I, I do, I will make a case that I think the match is remarkable considering that the elapsed amount of time. And feel free to ask questions, or, or do you want to go home and have a beer, or, I mean, whatever. Okay. So what I've done here is I've gone back to some of those points I made to begin with, and looked at some of these features in as much detail as I could see. So what, look on the left side, where I'm looking at the, the lattice work. We'll look at other things than lattice work, we'll get there. But the, 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 the cutouts which are painted here and in, at the time I took this photograph, and above that, a blown-up version of a scan, a photo I had made from the reproduction of the Bowman map, right? It would be clearer if we had reproduction, if we had photographs from the original map.
But that's really, really close.
So, so if you look, for example, look at the left side, which is, there's number four, and there's 1858, 2014. And it shows you this little archway over the entrance to the porch. And the yellow triangles I added, because they're not always clear, to point out the little swoops, the points, that, that structure is called a tray foil, the ones with three, three, is anybody an architect here, anyway? And I pointed out that in the, in the reproduction, photo of the reproduction, sometimes they're fuzzy and hard to see, that's why I put the little yellow triangles there to point those out. In both the top map, which is 1858, and the lower one, which is the, the 2014, okay? And the little red panel, which has not tray foils, but quadrifiles, there's four-cornered little cutouts, also matches reasonably well. You can see the cross shaped up there at the top, not perfect. Then turning our attention to these barge boards, which were boards nailed at the, on the edge of the, on the, end of the eaves. Originally, they didn't have to be ornate like this, but a, a trend started in England of cutting out these incredibly ornate cutout structures, which then got to America and ended up on Gothic houses a lot. And so what you see on the right side there is 1858, 2014, showing you the, the tray foil structure very much so, with, but with the, these dangly cutouts here. And, and, and they, they, I think they match extremely well, I'm biased, with the 1858. In fact, I have several of different ones that I picked out of, of the photographs to show you that many of them match really extremely well. I truly believe that those are original, even though there's some slight differences. There's little ornamental balls over, at the tips of the point going down in the 1858 one. Man, I can imagine those could so easily knocked off in paint jobs and stuff over 120 years or whatever it is here.
Or children.
Or children, or people throwing balls. And they're missing on the, on the other one on the side here. Okay? I don't want to burn out the whole date, let's leave. So this, this, I thought this, 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 I caught the light, I, I made several photographs. I, I don't know the lady that lives there, I'm sorry, I never knocked on her door and introduced myself. I probably should just do that, so she doesn't think I'm some weird dude who shows up with a camera and photographs her house from the street. But I, I didn't feel like bothering her. But one day I got this, when is this, 19, 2020? I got this picture with the slant, the sun slanting, and you can see the, the black cutouts because of the shade. And, and they, they match, I think extremely well with what, what the, in this case, I've got the old map on the right and the map on the other side there. So I'm happy with this, I don't know whether you guys are. Now, let's go back to the beginning. I said there were three windows on the west exposure, and, and there are, in both 1858 and, and now. But they're different looking, of course. The top window actually matches quite well. It doesn't, it has a little landing up there where, I don't know, it's too small to set up there, it was just an ornamental little porch, a little Juliette, is that the term? I learned the new term, thank you.
Fake little balcony.
Okay, a little fake balcony, which is not there. But the rest of the structure of the, the window, the top one is there, except some of them, there's an air conditioner sitting in there, it's, okay, it's hard to see. What's missing is the two matching Gothic pointed windows down here. And I spent a lot of time looking at this, and maybe some of you have seen what I see there already, if you look very carefully at that window at the bottom with the fan in it, there's some interesting marks on the boards there.
Or describing-
Well, we can, I don't want to be here all night, let's just go to the, the big reveal here.
Oh, okay.
Okay? Yeah, there's, wait a minute, what of those is missing? Well, anyway, go one more slide, and let's see if I have backup one more? I must, I had several versions of this, I'm sorry. Well, anyway, what those dark horizontal lines represent is what happens when you have boards and they're painted, and then the board expands and contracts, and the paint falls out, leaving you a line which looks dark with the light shining on it. But there can also be vertical lines, okay? You can see, so I put little red arrows to point out some of those vertical lines. Those are, I assume, because I haven't gone over there and touched the wood, I assume those are where it was sawed through vertically. And also you've got a paint removal crack. That's what I'm arguing.
So they went through and took out a chunk that included not only the points, but also the siding around the points, and just replaced it with a whole section of lap siding, rather than just taking the slanted part out and filling it in, which would have had very noticeable slant cuts.
The original windows in like 1958 or whenever would have been very fragile, and they thought, we'll just go to Menards or wherever, and we're going to buy two windows that are already assembled, already, you know, got the counterweights and all that stuff, and hang them and put them in there. That's my argument here, is that the, that's the, this is the biggest difference between the two, between the two images, between the two structures.
And even in 19, when would this have happened? When it was moved, do you know when it was moved?
I don't know. I have not been able to find the, the date yet for the removal. There's a, I've spent a lot of time with my other earlier work. There's a big file over in the, in the library, in the archives, showing you of, of removal dates from the City of Urbana from a long time ago, but it's not complete, as near as I can tell. I could not find evidence of a date for when this was moved. And I could never find one for the Boydin House as well, I just accumulated as much other evidence as I could that it had been moved.
Because even if, even if they had been changed in, say, 1930 or 40-
Right.
It's 90 years ago, and you're going to be looking at 90-year-old windows, which are technically historic.
Ooh, yeah, that's a problem.
Yeah, relatively not historic, but still 90 years old.
Anyway, and then to, to wrap up, looking at the back of the house, the house was originally on, on Elm Street in Green and, and North something, or they're in-
McCullough.
McCullough, what was it, North, I can't read my own, North Street or North Avenue, it was, it's been, had been renamed at some point apparently. And when you look at the back, there is one little identifying feature, which is, if you look, this is a picture from the back from the, the little toy drawing maps, the Ruger map. Can you, guys know the three-dimensional Ruger? Of course you do, you guys all know, sleep with those maps probably, you know them extremely well. Well, anyway, and if you look at the back, it's got a little dot. That little dot means there was a window in the back of the house. And if you drive down the alley and look at the back of the house now, there's a little window, which I think is like a little tilted, a little diamond there actually. There's a, not much in the way of features. I, I didn't have a photograph, so I sat down with my pencil and sketched the one on the left, that's just my interpretation of what it would look like if we had it intact. Anyway, I think, is it the end of my, I think that's the, oh, yeah, I just, why do I like, I don't know, why am I so interested in this house? Because I, I've always thought, I've always thought all these barn, ornate barge boards were incredibly cool when you'd find old houses, when I was a kid, like in Boston where you lived for a while, that still had these intact. They must be an incredible nuisance to maintain and paint and fix, but I still think they're just cool. And I, it's, I haven't been able to find out whether SJ Toy knew Lincoln or anybody of importance, but he was there, he was living here, he was a doctor. And, oh, and I made this point a long time, then I'll stop. Think about a great name to do a, like a, use kids to, you know, popularize this house, give money to the Toy House Restoration. Anyway, there you go. Thank you, I know, Trent asked me to come in and talk about, I'd sent it to, this, this work to him and thought, he thought you'd be interested, so thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. Any comments, follow, feedback, questions?
I'll ask, have you looked at the series of Sandborne maps to see when the lot that the house is on now becomes occupied?
I have spent a lot of time with the Sandborne maps. To be honest with you, I can't remember whether, I think I looked it up, I can't swear to that. But that, make that a no, because I, you know.
That might be a good clue for like the, the moving date, or when something is constructed there, that might be another piece to the puzzle.
Right.
Yeah.
Though I guess, anyway, my, and other questions? It's, I walk around with, oh, go ahead.
Well, no, I just think that it's a very interesting study. I think you've done a real thorough job, and I kind of agree that at one time they must have replaced the vertical lower windows on this, front of the house with something more convenient and modern. But I, I think you've got a pretty strong hand on it. Should it be true if we can get things done so we know for sure what, how do we know anything that, you know, for sure from history like that? It's always documented from the points of view and, or undocumented completely, so. Written, a written diary of who lived there, you know, somebody's memoirs might have mentioned something cool, but where are those records today? We don't know.
Well, when I did the Boydin House, I felt like I had done so, so much research on it that I hit bottom, that I, there were not likely to be further records here in, in town, at least anywhere. Some of these other houses, who knows what's, what's out there? The City of Urbana is full of- The city of Urbana is full of families that have lived here since the 1830s scattered around, and there must be family records.
And, and to find, to find older photographs of homes.
Yes.
People always would take photographs of their homes, or standing in front of their homes, or their car.
Right.
But, you know, those are family documents, and unless they're found in an attic, or, you know, distributed somehow or another way, these things just disappear over time.
I, my wife and I saved some old photographs when our oldest son was a little baby. Janine went over to the, what then was a recycling center, someplace in downtown Champaign. There was a big box of old photographs for the Hurd family, H-U-R-D, the old settlers here. And we, we took them to the library. I don't know if they're, I don't know if they archived them or not, or there was not enough information to archive them. Anyway, my, yes.
Could you go back to the, the map? Just, I'm.
Which map?
Right, right, right.
Yeah. It picks the leads out when you get far enough.
Were you interested in the location or the house?
No, I was interested in the location, and I'm just thinking about how, so it's like the block west of Race.
Well, the thing that's, the thing that's kind of, what am I missing in terms of, yeah, I guess it's fine. I was, it just looked to me like it was farther east than it is. This is fine. I was thinking about where Main and Springfield separate, and I guess part of the issue is, it looks like the breadth of that, in that plan, is much larger than we would think about it now, because I think of that break as occurring, and I actually pulled up a, a map, like, it's, there's Race Street, right? So it's, there's like a scale issue for me, because when I think of where McCullough is, it looks like it's further off. I almost think, yeah, I think that, I think that what you've circled there is, either they moved McCullough Street, or McCullough Street is actually like a couple blocks, yeah, to the west.
It's the third street. Well, it was. West of Race, and here you've got it.
Yeah. That looks like Cedar, Cedar Street.
I'm willing to look up anything you want me to look up that I can find. You, you have, I'm sure you guys know this, all of these street, these street widths vary all over the place from our expectations now, because they were just grass streets, where you'd drive your horse back and forth. There was, there were not, there wasn't any pavement for a long time.
But I can see also now, as I look at it, based on the shape of the house there, that the, the red circle's just in the wrong spot. That's at Cedar, and then you want to go one west, and that's Bertrade, and then one west from there is, right, right where that is, you can see from the shape of the house, that the red circle's just in the wrong. It just didn't, I was wondering, is this one of these things where they renamed a street, or renamed a building, or why? But, got it, okay.
That's why I put North slash McCullough, was because I, I think it's North Street on this map, if you look down here.
Ah, okay.
It's high and dry streets.
North, right, okay.
And, I'm trying to see if it's.
It was down here at the bottom.
So it's, yeah, yeah, okay.
It says North Street there, that was.
It's now North McCullough, yeah, okay.
And maybe I put the map, the circle in the wrong place, sorry.
This, it's possible that that kind of looks like it might say S.J.
Yeah, this is definitely the house here.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
So, so it was really at the western margins? I mean, it was sort of outside of ways. I mean, this is all parceled out now, but when it was built, it was, it was out there.
Right. Did you, I, I love these old maps, I have to, could you slide it back up? It took me a long time before I realized it actually shows you the edges of the Big Grove, which I'm working on now. If you look below this, there you go, right there, right there. That's east, that thing that looks like a drain going, like, like something, a little path going to the right is East Main Street, and, and he's just showing you the border of the Big Grove there, which I found kind of fascinating.
Didn't realize it was that close into town.
Oh, yes, well, when I get my Big Grove talk done at the, at the library later in the summer, I'll send it.
Any other questions or comments?
I, I've got one. Dennis, do you know what Yelona studied on this house, or aware of that? Because Kathleen Jones, the owner, made mention of, that Yelona had published her research some time ago on this house.
Really? Oh, sorry.
And I've never seen that, that I remember, but I wondered if you.
Well, I know that, I know that she did work on, like, a historic walk or tour document, you know, back in, what, 2005 or something like that?
Might ask her what, what she has on this house, compared with Stuart's.
It's a thoughtful thought, yeah. She, she was once extremely keyed into the histories of the community, that she was researching it at depth. And she could have written a beautiful book about it, but she had no time to do it, and now it's kind of, you know, just stacks in, in a file, so.
Okay.
But, yeah, I could ask her about it, since this came out.
Okay.
So, can I say one more quick thing? Two and a half. I, I, my interest in this is, I love history, and I love the, these searches through the archives. I could live in archives, looking at old photographs and things. And I have no expertise in raising money to do this, but I just was, I don't know. Trent was excited about the work, and I thought he invited me in. The other, the other quick thing is, if work is gonna actually be done on the house this summer, this would be a great sample to get a sample of the framing underneath the house. This is something I do know about, being a biologist interested in trees. Oak, the Big Grove, the connection between my research that I'm doing now, the history of the Big Grove, is that the Big Grove went places. It just didn't vanish into the air. And, and several of the old houses I'm familiar with in my immediate neighborhood have oak framing. The Boydin House, there's a picture of that in there. And, and oak is very distinctive to see because of the alternating summer and, and fall woods. It's extremely easy to, so when the railroads got here in 1853, all of a sudden, there was a transition, pretty quickly, to people framing their houses in pine, because oak is as hard as a rock. It must have been terrible building them. But several of the houses around here, the really old homes, 1850s homes, that I've been in the basements, about four or five or more people have invited me in, or I've asked myself in, have oak beams. If this has oak beams, that would be very strong evidence that it's, at a minimum, it's an 1850s house. Okay? And you just need a little piece of wood, you don't need, you don't need to saw out a whole log. Okay.
Thank you so much. We really appreciate.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we're really grateful for the presentation and that information, and thank you for the suggestion to Trent. The next item, Certified Local Government Grant Awards and Next Steps. So we had had some discussion about buddies, but in putting this on here, am I right that you would like to coordinate us?
So, so the next steps are a bit about, this actually was kind of drafted prior to us getting notified that we had received a grant. So the next steps for the CLG, last year's CLG grants are to, you know, get the grant award processed and get Adeline working on the website. The future steps are, if you want to resubmit the Royer Education Grant, but then also continuing to work on the Historic Preservation Plan, that would be the buddying up, and looking at other plans, as well as our plan, and talking amongst yourselves, and then maybe switching off with buddies, you know, after a couple months, and starting to talk about the comments that are, you know, will accumulate. I did start a folder of Historic Preservation Plans, and I think I've figured out maybe email addresses for every buddy that will work, because Google does not like the city's email addresses. But I think you should have access to two folders now, one of which is the Property Monitoring Folder, and also the Historic Preservation Plans Folder. And I did send an email to the NAPSE listserv, piggybacking on somebody else's inquiry about preservation plans and requests for proposals, and I was like, ooh, I want the same information. Please either email them directly to me, or put them in this link. And I've already got like four other plans in there. One, I think, is Austin's, perhaps. So, you know, the next step might be me putting together a spreadsheet to go in that folder, and list the plans that we get, and then people can volunteer, oh, I want to look at this one with so-and-so. And then, rather than having everybody look at the same plan, we can have people look at different plans and then report back to the commission and say, here's what I liked about this plan that I think we ought to include. And then other folks can talk about what they liked on another plan, but we should all definitely go through our own plan, which is in there, and start taking notes on it.
As, as part of that, did we, I, I mean, I have a vague memory of, of kind of allocating focus areas, but I don't, maybe we didn't do that.
Like topics?
Yeah, like, like which parts of the, of the plan would you want you and your buddy to focus on?
I think we want everybody to look at everything in our plan.
Got it, okay, all right, thank you. So we just need a, we need a commitment from everybody to get together with your buddy, and.
I believe.
And those are listed in the minutes on March 5th, on page seven, in section L, very last paragraph, is Mr. Weiss and Mr. Roberts, Chair Urban and Mr. Hayes, Mr. Shepherd and Ms. O'Donnell, Mr., sorry, Susan Apple, and, and with Chair Urban and Hayes. And so, so, and then Phyllis Winter Williams, Winters Williams, and Mr. Shepherd and Ms. O'Donnell.
Mm-hmm. So get together, get a bottle of wine, a cup of coffee, a glass of sparkling water, and talk, you know, Historic Preservation, make it, make it fun.
Very cool. So, so let's ask everybody to find a time before the next meeting, or let's assume that's in four weeks, but if one can find a time in the next month to get together for an hour or whatever, that would be.
And what I'll, I'll pester you, and I'll say, hey, remember to please put your comments here in the Google Drive. Or actually, I will have you send them to me, so that we are complying with OMA, and, you know, you can see each other's things, you just can't discuss it outside of an, outside of a public meeting. And I'll, I'll hassle you every couple weeks, so that you don't do like I do, which is do all my work for the meeting on the day of the meeting.
So going back to the, the grant award, so again, I love what you suggested before about proceeding with the in-kind components of the Royer project. And then, for Adeline, or Adeline, Adeline, Adeline? Is there anything that other members of the commission can do to support the advancement of that?
Well, I think if, if there, and I'll leave that up to Kate, you know, if there are bits that, that commission members can help with, it might, you know, take a while for us to figure what those bits are, and we need to get Adeline a, a city email address, so she has access to our ArcGIS software, and can start putting things up, and it might be later on, when she's putting content up, that she needs photos, or comments, or reviews. But I will say, thinking ahead, you know, we did that Pocket, the walking tour that we did for the downtown historic district, that Lily Wilcock and I recorded the readings for. You know, there are so many landmarks that that needs done for, so at a, at a point, we will probably have, you know, scripts to write for different buildings, and tweak to get them down, you know, to a minute and a half, and then red, you know, at the very least, folks could do stuff like that.
Yeah, I, I think the, the kind of starting point for Adeline is that everything that was on the Historic Preservation webpage for the city is now not there. And so, the, it's not there anymore.
Is it disappeared, or just not on there?
It's just not, it's not there. Like, because the city migrated to a new webpage, all of the content that had been Historic Preservation Commission, so the 100 Buildings of Urbana, the podcasts, all of that, none of that is on the city's webpage anymore.
Does it still exist?
Adeline downloaded all of it, and so, Adeline certainly has it. I don't know if the city still has those files. Marcus, do you know?
So we would have the original files, I believe, in, in the divisions archives. The city created a Historic Preservation in Urbana website. It's very sparse, and the thinking at upper levels was that sort of information would be more appropriately housed at the library, or at the Historic Museum. So if the commission would like to respond to that, with the hopes for what it would like to do, that would probably be accepted more coming from the Historic Preservation Commission, especially if you could lay out in bullet points, here's what our plan is, you know, we want to replicate the information that was available on the 17 different webpages that we used to have, but in a more concise, non-repetitive format, that will generate lots of traffic. Because that was, one of the issues was, you know, they looked at the analytics, and nobody ever visited those sites, so they thought, you know, nobody was interested in it, when perhaps it was the fact that there were a bunch of standalone sites that weren't connected to each other without rhyme or reason. If we create a good site, we, I think that would be well-received.
Yeah, and, and web design companies usually begin by figuring out what the best way to index, and, you know, how do you get people to information they're interested in the shortest number of steps? But that's complicated work, and sometimes counterintuitive. Just before you jump in, typically, when anyone is redoing a website, they archive the old website in order to be able to mine it. So I'm assuming that somebody has, if, if somebody was hired to do it, that typically that's what's done. So if somebody knows how to get to it, that's another matter, but it's presumably sitting there somewhere. Although, Adeline, you say downloaded everything, so.
Adeline downloaded everything when it, like, last year, when the website was going away.
Okay, so we're, so we're fine regardless, yeah.
And I'll, I'll tell you what the plan is, and yes, there is an opportunity for everyone to participate in this, so the plan is to take all of those disparate pieces of information that were separate on the webpage, and to build a single ArcGIS-based story map that contains all of that information. So it would contain a map with historic districts, so you could see where the historic district and historic landmarks are. It would contain place-based links to each of the podcast entries, so that you'd be clicking on a location, and so you would navigate through all of the information that was all separate webpages through a single interface on the ArcGIS story map. That is like the lowest bar to leap over, to try to reconstruct all that information from a single spot. And because the city already has a contract with ArcGIS, it should be relatively simple and straightforward. I think that there will be an opportunity for Adeline to kind of draw up what she plans, how she plans to reconstruct each of those separate pieces as a layer within the ArcGIS story map, and send that out to everyone as a plan of work before she starts it. But she would need to be hired first to even start any of that, so downloading all of that stuff, she did, working for me, instead of the city, so.
And for people who don't know, I mean, if I remember this correctly, she's just, she's an advanced undergraduate in architecture with an interest in historic preservation, but is she a rising senior or rising junior? Is she a rising junior now? I don't, I think she's a rising senior.
I would not, I'm, I'm not sure at the moment.
Okay, okay. Anyhow, so she's a University of Illinois Architecture student, though, who is passionate about historic preservation, so.
Yes. And just as she worked on the Mid-Century Modern Home Tour, and many other projects locally.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So the Section M announcements, I mean, an obvious one would be the Hotel Royer ribbon cutting. It's been said a couple times before, but that's. but that's a, um, a week from today. So June, Wednesday, June eleventh, with the ribbon cutting at four o'clock. Uh, it's framed as four to four-thirty, but I'm assuming they're gonna be cutting that ribbon, I don't know if that means they're cutting it at four oh-five or four twenty-nine. Um, but then I, my guess is it's four twenty-nine after some speeches. And then from four-thirty to six o'clock, they're doing guided tours of, of the building, which is great. And then one, I wanted to add, it's not really an announcement, it's more of an invitation, that at the end of the, um, tours, the, the mid-century modern tours, about twelve, um, volunteers wearing pink shirts, just like the one that Marcus is wearing for which he gets coolness points. We were standing outside the Roland Realty Building, which is part of the Jack Baker complex, um, at the southwest corner of Chester Street and South First. It's in Champaign, but it looks like it's stone. It's very different from everything else, but it's not stone. It's concrete coated with some material and no one could figure out what it was. And it was making me think of Cain and Baptist. And so I guess, and there's an announcement that in some places where it's starting to peel away, there's an opportunity to see something of interest. And it might be an opportunity for us to have a little dialogue with our colleagues at the Historic Preservation Commission in Champaign. But it seemed that we were really wondering about, is this another one of these local, any, I mean, we can talk about that afterwards, but is this one of these locally produced inventive surfaces such as-
Where was this, at the Jack Baker?
Well, yeah, so within the complex there-
Was it on the corner?
It's the thing that looks like a, like a maybe, um, a fraternal organization.
With the crests up at the top.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, and we were also guessing, you know, if you didn't know what it was, is this a jewelry shop? Is this an insurance company? Because it has one room with wood paneling and a safe behind. But Chris Enk, who owns it, noted that at the very top register, which you can only see from across the street, there's a blue panel. And behind the panel, it says Roland Realty. So that could be taken off and revealed that. But the surface is really interesting, so.
That is the Roland Realty that is still the Roland Realty today.
Yes, right. And it's the Gillespie family, yeah, exactly. And, right, Kate, which Kate knows really well. Yeah, yeah, so that's really-
What's the address on that?
Well, I don't remember the exact number, but I mean, it's, um, it's at the southwest corner of Chester Street. It's where Chester Street verges into South First Street in Champaign. So it's the easternmost unit of that complex.
Locust comes in right there.
Yeah, Locust turns off. So it's got the little circular, you know, mini park kind of there. And it's the thing that looks different from everything else because of the lightness of the surface. But the material's really interesting.
So Kate, were you saying Roland Realty like that was the original? So if you read, like I, I looked at the crests and it says like something, something in honesty.
Honesty, best policy on the top and, and etched into the stone. And then it's honesty, our policy, right in the crests, each of which has an R. And then the central crest on the north facade has like a suit of armor, I believe. It's got that, but anyhow.
So I, I guess that could be kind of a cool motto if you want people to trust you as a Realtor.
We were thinking, well, we were thinking therefore insurance, jewelry, it seemed to have, but the realty, then you also look at the end of that building and you see vitrines, what had been vitrines, um, where some, some sort of a framing device was cut out. But they're not very deep. So that would have been a place to post, uh, listings for properties available because they're not deep enough for jewelry. So it makes a lot of sense. It's terrific space, but, I am. Um, so, any other announcements? Sorry, jumped right in there. Okay. Um, so adjournment, we don't move to adjourn, right? We just announced the adjournment at eight thirty-five PM. Thank you very much, everyone, for your time this evening.